Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Waterbury Board of Education Workshop Committee Meeting for Thursday, October, I mean, August 5th, 2021. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom Technologies. Our first agenda item for tonight is the Silent Prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have any, anything you want to put in on the Silent Prayer before we get started?
Not anything specific for tonight, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Our next agenda item is a Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, would you be so kind in leading us in the pledge? Thank you, dear.
You're welcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, our God, and to the world. Thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez.
You're welcome.
Our next agenda item is public speaking. Do we have any callers?
Yes, we have one caller. Robert Goodrich, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Goodrich, 14 Stanrod Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut. Good evening, President Pagano and Vice President Harvey. In 2020, in 2021, Congress passed three stimulus bills that provided nearly 190 billion to the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. These funds are to support Connecticut's sustained safe reopening of schools while adequately expanding opportunities for students disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, emphasizing that students who are Black, Latinx, LGBTQI+, English language learners, and differently abled students and their families are to be supported. We want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of school staff that have led our district through the pandemic and invite you to increase your collaboration with the community. In the late spring, RACE learned about the funding choices for SRTwo and were immediately concerned with decisions to spend millions of dollars on improving school buildings instead of making large dedicated investments that would impact a generation of students, deepening our concerns with the district's lack of meaningful consultations to formulate its previous plans and the complete lack of public meetings held by the district to collect community input required by the American Rescue Plan. Now, the district must do better or run the risk of violating the regulatory provisions embedded in our federal legislation. But more importantly, if they choose to ignore these basic responsibilities, they will further disenfranchise students of color. Now, we have had numerous one-on-one meetings, partnered with other community organizations, consulted with educational and policy experts as well as parents, but most importantly, we've held listening sessions with actual students who attend Waterbury Public Schools in order to meaningfully aggregate consultation required by ARP. Now, since May, RACE has convened three town halls that centered on students and parents and local advocates. We believe that we have the pulse of the community and now have the meaningful consultation required by ARP that will guide the district in adhering to its own equity policy and the State Department of Education's mandate requiring the funding to be used to support district priorities as determined by an equity lens. Now, here are some of our recommendations. One, provide the class of 2020-21 graduates with a college and career readiness stimulus check of $2,500 apiece. Invest in transforming parent engagement to ensure parent voice is evident in all school-based decisions by allocating $2,500 per year to 200 parents who are motivated to participate in School Governance Council. Invest in safety and security and the feelings of wholeness for LGBTQ+ students by fully funding access to general neutral bathrooms in every school, training and support for all school staff based on their professional duties, and to fully fund LGBTQ+ student clubs so that those students are resourced equitably. Invest in establishing and then growing cross-cultural relationships between educators and students by allocating $3 million to purchase culturally sustaining books and literacy materials at every school for every student. Invest in building culturally responsive school buildings and campuses by allocating $6 million to redesign and construct current buildings to reflect the cultures and identities of students and families that attend them. Eliminate the waitlist for the new Black and Latinx history courses by allocating funding for more educators, more course materials, and more take-home learning tools. And invest in community-based mentorship programming that provides access to identity-based dyads for each middle and high school. Now, we'll be submitting our completed plan on August 11th to the Superintendent and to the State Department of Education to ensure that this meaningful consultation is taken into consideration. We sent this communication to you all tonight, and we expect and hope that you will contribute to our plan insofar as that you're interested in gaining the meaningful consultation of the communities that you serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodrich. Are there any other calls on the, on the line, Carrie?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a presentation from the SLAM Collaborative. Mr. Will Zuda is the interface. Mr. Zuda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I think, but I believe SLAM is on, Phil and Kemp, I see them on. The SLAM, it has entered into agreement for a long-range infrastructure facility study. The professional services will include to perform and analyze our school enrollment projections, our population trends, and forecast demographics for the next 10 years. They will be hired to do a comprehensive needs assessment and programmatic analysis to meet the programmatic priorities as identified in the Waterbury Strategic Plan and consistent with the vision, mission, vision, core values as adopted by the Board of Education. They will be, they're hired to examine all school facilities, resources, and technology infrastructure with respect to current and future conditions and capacity. They are considered various options for grade and geographic educational grouping, configuration, and organizations, and they will prepare a facilities master plan with identified priorities for repair, renovation, rig construction, or consolidation of the district's physical plants, including major mechanical. Kemp and Phil are on, and they will provide us with a presentation to the whole board.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm going to share my screen. And what I've got is an excerpt from our presentation in June to the selection committee. And can everybody see that?
Yes.
So we're going to try and keep our presentation to about 12 to 15 minutes or so. We may be going through some of these slides relatively quickly. If you want us to pause on anything and have any comment, happy to do that, or we can save questions for the end. With me tonight is, first of all, my name is Kemp Moorehart. I'm with the SLAM Collaborative. I'm principal with the firm. Done several projects in the city of Waterbury over the years. Really pleased to be working with you again on this project. With me tonight is Kristin Furtak, also of SLAM Collaborative, and Phil Conte from Studio Jade. And I'm going to go through their respective roles in just a moment. Advance. All right. It doesn't want to seem to be cooperating with me. Exit from full screen mode. Hopefully, you can still see the screen relatively, relatively well. I'm just going to advance this way. So the study is broken down into four major components. The demographics and enrollment projections, what we call it, part A. Part B is curricular and programmatic priorities. Part C is facility conditions, capacity, and utilization. And then the final portion is facility master planning and best use alternatives. Our team with us today, as I mentioned, is myself, Kristin, and Phil Conte. Also part of our team is Michael Zubba, who is, will be running the demographics and enrollment projections component, as well as Nick D'Agostino from D'Agostino Associates, which will be responsible for the technology assessment across the district, as well as a few others in our firm for cost estimating and technical expertise on the architectural side and planning side. Just a quick overview of SLAM. SLAM is a 270-person architectural firm. We're headquartered in Glastonbury. For those of you that may not know us, we've done several school projects in the city, Gil Martin and Career Academy being two, among other projects. We've got quite a bit of experience doing K-12 master plans in Connecticut and the New England region. So we bring that expertise to the table. The process is, is broken down into what I like to call discovery and delivery. So the left-hand side of the screen, item one and two, is really where we start gathering all the information. We, we do our data collection and work with you to envision where you want to go into the future. We identify the needs assessment as far as programs, space requirements, site planning strategies, and benchmark that against. site planning strategies, and benchmark that against other districts in the state. We then take all that information and start to develop options for facility best use. And that, that becomes the right-hand side of the screen. Once we work with you to develop options, we will then put cost estimates together and implementation strategies on how to best facilitate those, those plans moving into the future. This will all culminate into a written facilities assessment report that you can have to use into the future. Just a little bit of a breakdown on how, who of our team is doing the various components. SLAM being the lead, we will be responsible and participate in all components of the work. SLR is responsible for demographics and enrollment projections, as well as site assessments. Studio Jade will be taking the lead on facility conditions assessment. And SLAM will be taking the lead on facility and capacity and utilization assessment. And as I mentioned, D'Agostino on technology. And then the entire team will be involved in the master planning component. A few, few key challenges that we see with this project. Just gathering the data is always a large lift. So we will be working directly with school staff and administrative staff throughout the city, gaining access to the schools. We will be working with the district facilities to make sure that we can gain access to all the facilities to do our field assessments. Enrollment projections, you know, working with the intake center data to gather that assessment, or get that information to be able to produce the assessment for the next five to 10 years, understanding neighborhood revitalization groups. And then gaining or building consensus between city agencies and the Board of Ed is, um, is something that we are well-versed in. And building that consensus among those various stakeholders is a challenge, but it's nothing that we haven't done before. We understand that, you know, a project of this magnitude and complexity engages quite a few different stakeholders throughout the city. And everybody, each of those stakeholders has their own interests on the outcome of the project, and we will be working together to, to bring those all together into a comprehensive report. I'm going to skip over this. This is just a way we manage the process. We develop a detailed work plan. And so when we work with the working group established by the Superintendent's Office, we will be identifying decisions that we need from the group in advance so that we can move this project forward in a very efficient manner. Looking at the schedule, this is a schedule that was presented back in June. So it's a little out of date. It had started with, indicated a June start, but we are more likely going to be mid-August start on this process. But overall, we see the process taking about eight to nine months. The first three to four are the data gathering component and just assessing all the facilities, assessing the capacity and utilization and doing the enrollment projections. And then the latter part of the project is the planning component and community engagement, Board of Ed engagement into the planning and so forth. We're always looking to maximize reimbursement throughout this process. We were very well-versed in the state Office of School Construction Grants and Review. And your, the city of Waterbury's reimbursement rates are up here. So as we develop options, we are always being mindful to maximize that reimbursement in our proposed options. Phil is going to talk a little bit about the physical plant assessment and the process that they go through. Phil?
Great. Thank you, Kemp. Good evening, everyone. So Studio Jade is an architecture and engineering firm. We also specialize in facility condition assessments. We've completed them in 23 states and across Canada, over 500 million square feet of assessments. So we are very familiar with the process and gathering data. We have developed our own collection tool, which is a Microsoft Access database, which allows us to gather the data in the field, customize reporting for you, and then export that data back to you in Excel for your future use and planning. Next slide, Kemp. This is a snapshot of just one page of one report. We are two-thirds complete the Stanford Public School Assessment. This happens to be just one report that we're able to generate, which we customize to your particular needs. But what I wanted to show here is that very simply, a group that may not be familiar with construction can quickly determine what are high priority needs of a particular facility. This happens to be a school within Stanford's public school system. And you can quickly see that in the far right-hand column, the greatest need happens to be the HVAC system, the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning System. So as you are going through the planning process, this data quickly shows you that this particular school is in great need of a significant investment in the HVAC system. Second to that is the interior finishes of almost $5 million, which means this school may be a candidate for some curriculum enhancements or reprogramming. So you're able to make a more informed decision. For example, well, since this school needs so much work, maybe it is a good candidate to invest in blank. Or maybe this school, because of enrollment projections and the need, should be taken offline. That is our goal. Next slide, Kemp. Is to provide to you factual data, which is backed up by a lot of reporting that allows you to sort of digest this information in what we call snack-sized content so that you can make a data-driven decision based on the information. And lastly, what we'd like to do in the next slide, Kemp, is however you like to see it, present that data to you so that you, your constituents, the community can be informed and make that decision, whether it's based on a table or a bar chart or a pie chart that identifies maybe systems or priorities or reasons for the deficiencies. That is our goal in supporting this master planning effort.
Thanks, Phil. In addition to the physical building assessment that Studio Jade will be conducting, which will include architectural MEP structural systems, D'Agostino Associates will also be assessing the technology and physical security for each school, looking primarily at these different systems within each building and being able to forecast where infrastructure needs may be or to support future programs. In addition, we will also be visiting each site and doing an assessment of the exterior of each school. This is just a brief example of what that might look like. We will assess the condition of parking, drives, sidewalks, presence of fields, presence of playground structures and so forth to give an inventory of what each school has on for-site amenities. All of this information will be compiled into a comprehensive report by school and then be part of the overall master plan report. A key component of the study are demographic and enrollment projections. Mike Zubba typically would present these slides. I'm going to do a high-level overview based on my knowledge. But it starts with working with the district and getting all of the pertinent data from the Department of Public Health for live birth data, but as well as past enrollment data from the city and the Board of Ed, understanding demographic and housing data from the planning office. And then they develop a three-level projection, a low, medium, and high for your enrollment projections, which is important. And then we talk with you and work with you to identify which version of those enrollment projections we all feel as a group are the most appropriate to use in the planning. Some of the drivers that are understood at the district level are historic development and demographic patterns, housing market and economic trends, and planning and development initiatives. And at the neighborhood level, certain enrollment trends, you can see that we also develop what we call GIS mapping. It's a geographical information systems mapping. Each student will be mapped and geo-located within the city to be able to generate maps like this where we can identify where student density resides, which will inform what we need for facilities in certain neighborhoods. We also look at localized housing conditions, sales, and starts where certain immigration may be occurring and where future developments are likely to occur. And in this particular slide, it shows areas where, in the green, may be new unbuilt parcels within the city that could be used for development. And then in the yellow are redevelopment parcels. And then similarly, analyzing enrollment and looking at trends, and this particular slide here is looking at English as English language learners per square mile, and it's kind of a heat map. So it identifies where we have those students that may be bilingual, and that may be a certain driver for a certain type of program or a school. I know that when we worked with the city in 2015 on the elementary school study, that was one aspect of that study that we looked at where we considered building a bilingual school because of the high density of English language learners in this quadrant of the city. So all of this comes together and along with the facility condition assessment, as Phil just mentioned. And all this data gathering comes together and informs the planning process. And as I mentioned, enrollment projections are made on a low, medium, and high level. And we'll choose the one that best aligns with the, the city's desire for moving forward with the planning. In addition to this, Kristen's going to talk about the capacity and utilization assessment that we go through of each school. So we have a functional capacity for each school to serve as part of the planning process. Kristen?
Great. Thanks, Kemp. So briefly, as program and planner, what we do is we're going to go through all of the buildings, all your schools, and really understand the capacity and utilization. And we're looking at every space anywhere from like janitors closets to gyms to classrooms and really understanding the capacity of what your speech school can individually hold for your students. And this is just a quick example of the grade level that we're looking at, the room number, the square footage, and the current occupancy for this example. Here, this is kind of a summary of when we look at all of the schools. These are, this is the elementary. We're breaking it down by the current enrollment, the functional capacity, what the teacher cap is per student. And this is just a summary of all the information that we're able to collect. We're looking at the grade range and starting to understand what each school has for offerings beyond just the academic spaces. And this was part of the report that we did for you all back in 2015. This was a Waterbury benchmark. You can see here designated in that yellow band at 800 square feet. And we looked at every school. In this example was the elementary and middle school.
It was elementary, and this is depicting the average classroom size by grade by school relative to that, that target benchmark of 800 square feet per classroom.
And you can see the range of some falling really extremely below and some above. So that was something that we wanted to analyze across the district.
This is an example of the type of data that we're going to be presenting to you as part of the study to help with those decisions.
So in, in beyond just the typical classroom here, we are looking at parity across the district. So here we break down, we look at the schools that had spaces to offer for art and for music. And in some cases, they were doing music in their general classrooms. And we really wanted to understand across the district what each school individually had for offerings, not only what they are offering, but how much square footage was allocated to that. And as we began to look at the master plan, is looking at, is it a small addition that we could accommodate to add an art classroom to those schools who were doing it in their general classrooms and really just, you know, digesting the information. So the next few slides will kind of just show you the different ways that we can graphically understand that information. So here, the previous was, you know, an Excel document. Here, we're looking at each of the four plans, you know, color rendering, that the red was their gymnasium, the purple is special education, and really just quickly getting a graphic understanding of the parity within the district for this example. Here is looking at the enrollment versus capacity. You can see, you know, the range of where the total enrollment is in the black bar and where the ranges of the, what is by contract at the 85% efficiency in the blue, and then the space capacity at 85% in the red. And you can kind of just see the district-wide of the enrollment versus capacity in this graph. And it's just a different way of capturing all the different information that we'll be providing within that report. And this was done in that 2015 report that we did for Waterbury. I mean, here, and here is just a different, you know, visual graphic of really understanding the, the schools. But this is good because it places those schools within your district with that map. And you can quickly see where the surplus of students are, without getting into the detail of all of it, but this is just a different way that we can capture a lot of that information graphically, getting a better understanding of the location of the schools within your district.
And the capacity or seat deficiency.
Sure.
Thanks, Kristen. Let me continue.
Sure. So part of the planning and programming, we really looked at this strategic plan that you guys have stated for the 2020, 2027, and really understanding your vision and your missioning. And really, what does, we want to make sure that we're running parallel with what you guys are striving for and creating those environments that support the equal academic growth for your, both students and teachers throughout your district. So we just wanted to make sure that we're running parallel with the thoughts and process that you guys have created for your strategic plan. And this just captures kind of what our process is. We really want to engage with everybody, not necessarily just on this call, but really to your whole district, you know, from the teachers to the staff, even to students. We're really investigating a lot of information with the help of Studio Jade and SLR. We're starting to analyze a lot of that data, really comparing, comparing the function, the sizing of spaces, the net square foot per student. And then we begin, once we get all that information, we can really look at planning the different options, understanding adjacencies with each of your building, and compiling that into that final report that we deliver back to you. And one thought, and then I'm going to hand it off to Kemp because I know he has a comment on this. But we, the number one thing that we want to do is make sure that we're engaging with all the right players. And we're, we understand that with COVID, it kind of has put a hold on the face-to-face interaction that we really like to be able to do with the district. But we've been able to utilize online surveys and really getting some feeders out there and being able to still capture a lot of input from the district just via surveys without that face-to-face interaction that we're looking for.
Thanks, Kristen. A few other, I'm not sure where that was, but a few other things to talk about with this slide are just how we engage with not only the Board of Ed during the planning process, but also the community. As, as Kristen mentioned, there are lots of tools that we've used prior to COVID. But with the advent of the COVID situation and virtual meetings, we've been able to further enhance those technologies such as Mentimeter, as the example in the middle of the screen here, where we can do real-time surveys of folks if we're even on a virtual meeting, where we can ask questions and have real-time feedback come through from the folks that are on the call. And then even do static surveys with Survey Monkey and garner information back from the community. And it's a really great way for us to engage the community and also engage you, the Board of Ed, in this planning process. And just a couple of quick examples, these are, this is an example of what we presented and prepared for facility best use options back in 2015 for the Waterbury Elementary Schools study that we conducted. And we looked at four options. These are two of them. And the next slide just kind of zooms in on Option B, which was the one that I believe was selected to move forward and what was, what generated the Wendell Cross Project with the, the new three-classroom-per-grade school in the, in the Wendell Cross neighborhood, which would then create some swings. In the Wendell Cross neighborhood, which would then uh create some swing space and allow for renovation of. Uh, the other, the next few schools in sequence. Uh, and when we develop these scenarios, we also look at how the capacity is impacted, not only for the school that we're. Uh, developing, but also the others in sequence and how that uh. That shakes out across other schools in the district. We also look at the cost and list other major considerations as part of that option. And oftentimes, those options will then translate into um some site plan studies. You can see we developed a couple of options for the Wendell Cross site uh back in two thousand fifteen, twenty sixteen timeframe. And also looked at how that may translate to uh building floor plans. Now I realize this, the project took a different path as far as how it was laid out on the site. But uh, these types of studies are are what drives the numbers and the costs for the studies or for those uh options. So that that sums up the presentation. Uh, we're happy to open it up for Q and A. Will, does it go back to you or?
Um, yeah, I definitely would like to add that, you know, we we do have a short window to get this completed and we have a lot of work to do. And this is really going to drive all our future funding projects, all future projects that we're going to um under Esther Two and Arc. So we've already, we uh made contact with Mike Zubo and provided him almost all of the data. Uh, as far as enrollment data, historical data from the the state and uh as far as transfers. Um, so now working on getting the blueprints ready for for this project so we can kick off, hopefully to get a meeting scheduled next week. Uh, with um, you know, find out what dates are available with Dr. Ruffin and get this project moving um forward as fast as we can. Uh, I know, Doctor, if you want to add anything to the.
Now, I actually, um, you know, spoke with Kemp today. Thank you very much for being here this evening and bringing the team. Uh, our members of the team and uh, you know, it's going to require us to be able to work very closely, develop a schedule. You know, have a team in Waterbury that's able to respond so that we're, we're not delaying the process and we're going to move forward. So it will require a point person on our side to make certain that there's constant communication and we don't skip a beat on this. And uh, you know, that we're going to work collaboratively on a communications plan so we could go out and make certain that. We are engaging with the community and that we have future ongoing meetings with the board and with the city.
Any other comments or questions for uh the SLAM initiative while we have them here, guys? Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Hi, uh Kemp and uh and the rest of the panel, thank you for the presentation. Um, I just want to stress, and you said it, Kemp, that this was the team that's going to be working on this. And I would expect that the people that are on this, on this uh presentation tonight are going to be the people working right through to the end. We we we're the year eighteen, we don't want to be team.
Oh, we 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 stressed that during the selection process, Rocco, absolutely.
We like being part of the team.
Thank you, I appreciate those nice comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, I know we did a, some sort of a similar study. Um, you know, five, six years ago or what have you. And when I brought that up, when we started talking about this, I was told that that uh report didn't really give us everything we needed. And that's why we had to go ahead with this report. So uh, I I don't think we should rush anything. I think we should do it properly. I get it, we have a calendar to follow. Uh, but if this is the report to make the other report obsolete. Then we need to uh, we need to put out the correct report. So uh, yes, time is of the essence. However, it also needs to be done correctly. Um, because five years from now, this board shouldn't have to hear. That we had another report that didn't meet our needs and we're going to have to do it again. So uh, let's uh, let's get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have a comment? All right, guys, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very educational and we will be seeing you in the future. So thanks.
Thank you for the invitation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a request approval of a student-teacher affiliation agreement with the University of Hartford. And right after that, there is a similar uh, um, request uh for the University of Connecticut. Uh, Juan Mendoza, the floor is yours for both agenda items.
Thank you. Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. The Office of Human Capital and Talent Management is requesting approval of a student-teacher contract with the University of Hartford. This is a three-year contract with the option to extend for an additional three years and is at no cost to the city or the Board of Education. Collaborating teachers do earn a stipend for the work, however, this is paid by the university. We currently have twenty-four teachers assigned to our district. In comparison, last fall, we only hosted ten. So mentoring student teachers is essential to the recruitment process in our district's grow-your-own efforts. These contracts make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next agenda item is yours, too.
Office of Human Capital and Time Manager is requesting approval of a one-year affiliation agreement between the University of Connecticut and the City of Waterbury. For their teacher residency program. The residency program will have two distinct parts. A paid internship portion and an unpaid student teaching portion. The paid internship portion will consist of five days per week in the school with a minimum of fourteen hours a week. In the content area between August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one and January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The city is projected to host five student residents and will pay them a rate of a hundred dollars a day. The unpaid student teaching portion will begin in January, on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two and end on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. And is in accordance with the existing student-teacher affiliation agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mendoza on either agenda item? Karen Harvey, are you waving your hand?
Yes, yes, I am. Just just a quick question, um, and it may have been contained or mentioned um earlier. But um, Juan, is is this residency program, um, is this focused on our local. Student teaching programs, like are the folks here or are they in um going to University of Hartford?
Uh, University of Hartford, and then uh, some students are from Waterbury and there's a couple at UConn, too, that are from the UConn area. So it's local universities.
Got it. Okay. Okay, do you know how many students are local just by chance?
No, I do not. I I could get that information for you.
Can you get that, please? I'd just like to know. Okay, and that's all I have, President Pagano. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment or a question? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Next agenda item is a request of approval. For a contract with West State Mechanical Incorporated for installation of heat pump and air conditioning system at thirty-two Hillside Avenue. Mr. Chris Harmon, I see you there. The floor is yours.
Yep. Uh, so anyways, this is for the old UConn building. And what it is, is it's obviously for uh West State Mechanical and the amount of one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Um, it's basically to put in a heat pump with the air conditioning system. Um, it's on one floor only. So right now, it's actually being rented out for the, by the Yeshiva. Um, so this is funding by the Estor One state-funded project and um. Basically, it's for the ventilation for for the one floor of the school.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or comment for Chris, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, and then Commissioner Charles Stango?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. So UConn building and Yeshiva, and we're paying the tab, why?
Uh, it's our building. We we uh lease it out to the Yeshiva.
But is it the city building or is it the education department building?
Uh, it's the, I'd have to make sure, but I'm going to say it's owned by the city.
Then again, I would ask why we're paying for the bill, so if we can get some information on that, I would appreciate it.
I'd have to get that one in.
Commissioner Van Stone, I can, I can kind of chime in a little bit. Uh, this is um. Part of the Estor One money on the non-equitable services, so a portion of this money goes to the non-public schools. So this is coming from Yeshiva's non-public schools of Estor One, so it's it's not part of our public.
I do recall that being part of it. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
So I have no question on the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Charles Stango, I think you were queued up to be next.
I was, I just um echoing Tom Van Stone, I had the same question. All these years, I never realized that we, the Board of Ed, had anything to do with the old UConn buildings. But then Doreen shed light on that about it's a parochial school, so I totally get it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again, Doreen, for clarity.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions or comments? All right, Chris, you're off the hook. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is um. A request approval of the submission of the Connecticut State Department of Education Bridge Funding. Education of Homeless Children and Youth Grant. Louise Brown, the floor is yours. Louise Brown? I know she was on, that's okay, you're there.
I am, sorry, I was muted.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. Uh, this grant, uh, education uh of homeless children and youth is a grant. We've received uh multiple times in the past. It's a three-year competitive grant. This year, the grant would be due again for another round of competition. But the State Department of Education is delaying the uh release of that three-year application. But in the meantime, for grantees like Waterbury who already have this grant, they've offered what they're calling bridge funding. Uh, we've identified the cost that we need to sustain the programs that we have from now until the end date of the bridge funding. Which is November thirty. That's the forty-two thousand dollars represented in the letter I sent you. Um, uh, in addition to email communications, ultimately, at the end of July. The State Department of Ed requested that we submit a small application in the e-grant system. Which requires sign-offs from our local board. So given the urgency of applying by the deadline. We have submitted the application, but are requesting your approval for that submission. To effectively extend benefits of that same grant for Waterbury from now through November thirty.
Thank you, Louise. Our next item is a request of approval of a professional services agreement with Sue Vivian for consultations. Consultant services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant. Mr. Darren Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Board of Education Commissioners, and of course, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, tonight before you is part of our School Readiness Council uh decision uh from the Quality Enhancement Grant. Given to us through the School Readiness Grant. It would be for twenty-two thousand dollars to provide pyramid training, continue pyramid training for our school readiness. Programs here in the city. Uh, this is a pyramid program built on supporting students' social emotional development. Uh, based on the idea of three models, universal model, a secondary model to support targeted students. With additional supports and then a tertiary level that would provide individual and intensive support and intervention for. Students at their youngest of ages of about four and five years old in the preschools across the city.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Nobody's waving their hand. Darren, you are queued up for the next agenda item, which is item number seven. A request approval of professional services agreement with Easter Seals Rehabilitation of Greater Waterbury. To provide consulting services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Program.
Thank you, President Pagano. Uh, similar item from the same grant for thirty-two thousand dollars to. Contract with Easter Seals Rehabilitation Center to ensure our students who are in need of behavior therapy services. Receive those services in our school readiness programs.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Darren? Seeing no one waving their hand, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number eight. Request approval of job specifications for the new position. Of Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning, Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Mendoza. I see your names associated with it.
Thank you, President Pagano. I think this is our first joint uh, first joint uh, try here, Mr. Mendoza, so let's see if we can, we can nail this one. So uh, this is a position that was brought to the Personnel Committee. Uh, it is a supervisor of technology for teaching and learning. It would be a SAW administrator. Uh, as a reminder for the Board, the SAW administration scale is one hundred eleven thousand, five fifty-four. To one hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine. Uh, that is from step one to step nine. The funding for this position would be the Alliance Grant, and this position would report to me. Uh, as you can see below, uh, the education and experience on the first page and the license, licensers, certifications and requirements. Are are generally broad because we're looking for a highly effective teacher who also has, who also has technological skills. Uh, who is Google certified, trained level one and two, and who is preferred to be a Google uh certified trainer and to have ISTE. Uh, training as well. Uh, we are looking for uh, the essential functions of this position. Uh, really, uh, first and foremost is to ensure that uh the millions of dollars the district has spent on technology that. Uh, we have someone ensuring that 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 technology is being used effectively in the classroom. That's the, that's the, that's the best way to to put it. So um, we've spent over the last few years, uh, um, uh, several million dollars on ensuring students have laptops and that we have working. Uh, technology in the classrooms. Uh, what we don't have is a specific person in the district to ensure that. Uh, this, this technology is being uh implemented uh to the highest abilities across all levels. Uh, what this person would be doing is also working with our district technology plan. Uh, they'd be the one that is facilitating that to develop it, implement it and monitor it uh throughout the district. We also are, uh, as you may have heard Dr. Ruffin speak of, uh, we are uh starting to prepare for a virtual academy. As well in the district, and that will take expertise and that will take focus from district personnel to ensure that we are offering. Not just a virtual academy, but um all different options for students to be able to take virtual classes, whether it be. Initial classes and courses outside of the regular school day. Um, or whether it becomes a complete school and academy students can enroll into. Uh, again, that will take um, um, expertise and dedication to do so. Uh, we also would anticipate this uh position to uh, to work and collaborate with the Welcome Center and Parent Liaisons. To ensure our family members and community members are well-informed and truly prepared to support students uh through the use of technology. As uh many of this changes for our students, as though does it change for our parents as well. And so offering specific support for them uh to access all of those curriculum changes is important to us. In addition to that, uh, this position would uh develop professional learning for adults across the district and technology. And collaboration with the Human Capital Department. Uh, they would continue to ensure that our educators and staff members across the district become Google certified. Uh, they would manage the Google uh G Suite for Education uh in collaboration with uh Will Zudo's office. And work with Will Zudo's office in the background for all of these programs to ensure their effectiveness and they are streamlined with our curriculums. Um, and uh, finally, this, this uh, as as part of the essential skills, as there are many. Uh, the one that stood out the most would be also to coordinate, monitor and to prepare district-wide technology budget. As it relates to teaching and learning, so not just the hardware, not just bringing the computers in. But ensuring that that hardware is being used effectively and that we have a budget that uh meets the needs for students. And that collaborate with their fellow content supervisors in their areas to ensure we are leveraging the technology for learning across the district. Um, it is one, uh, it is, it is a new position uh for Waterbury. Uh, but it would not be a new position for um, for districts to adopt as their, uh, as this position was uh. The the the, the language in this position was adopted from several other uh districts that have gone this route. And we uh, we, we researched and implemented and looked at what other districts are doing um, uh, about this size, uh, some smaller, some larger. And 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 how they're managing uh the uh, what seems to be the the, the, the teeming amount of technology that has now been introduced. And and to ensure that students are are getting the most out of it. and, and to ensure that students are, are getting the most out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do we have any, uh, questions or comments for Darren on this? Commissioner Tom Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, so... We complain we don't get enough money in this grant, but once again, we're gonna create a new position. Um, and you highlighted, Mr. Schwartz, the, uh, letter C on the form for knowledge, skills, and abilities. Um, well, actually, skills, there's only four of them listed. Uh, quite a few abilities that, uh, would, uh, be on any, uh, job write-up, almost has nothing to do with the job itself. And the bulk of it is knowledge of, which I'm not sure how you define, uh, knowledge of when you do an interview. So, uh, I, yeah, I just don't know in these times with everything we're trying to juggle, being told that there's 170 positions that we can't fill because we can't offer enough money. But we, once again, find an opportunity to create a new SAW position and another supervisor's position. So, uh, there's, there's not a chance I'm gonna support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have a comment or a question? All right, seeing no one waving their hands, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which again is Darren, a request approval of a new high school course. Uh, school course African-American slash Black and Puerto Rican slash Latino courses of study. Mr. Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, President Pagano. I just need a second here to make sure I can screen share. Should've done this one first. Okay.
While you're doing that, I gotta take a quick walk. I'll be listening.
Okay. All right, hopefully you all can see that now.
Yep.
I see, I see one nod, so I'll go with that. All right, so, uh, thank you very much, uh, President Pagano, uh, my last agenda item tonight. Uh, I'm very excited to, to, we've talked about this quite, quite a bit, quite often, and for, for seems to be a long time now, it's finally coming to fruition, is, uh, Connecticut Public Act number 1912 and the now-written and hopefully adopted, um, curriculum for African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies Curriculum. As a reminder on the history, this is, this is, uh, this is somewhat of a unique curriculum for us in the district. This is the first statewide curriculum really truly being adopted by the state of Connecticut. Historically, the state of Connecticut doesn't typically write statewide curriculums. Uh, usually, curriculums are written in-house and/or adopted in-house and/or, uh, shared across, um, multiple districts. This is, uh, historic, uh, and you can read the history of the legislation on there. What, what I wanna, Pat, what I wanna point out on that slide, though, is that in the upcoming year, the 21, 22, two-year schools may offer the course. We, we, and then next year, they are required to offer the course. We are offering this course for all high school students in Waterbury for next year, and so we are, um, jumping, uh, full force into this, um, being a pilot for the, for the state with all schools. We have, um, um, as part of this advisory group, the, the, the great part about this, uh, this curriculum is that it, uh, when you have a state department behind writing a curriculum, um, you can access resources that we typically can't access at a local level. Um, I, uh, we, we would not be able to pull in the 152 state national members of the advisory group, many of them being college professors, high school teachers, high school department, uh, chairs across the state, professional learning facilitators, community educational partners and educational advocates. And just to give you an idea, the college professors are ranging from Yale, University of Hartford, Central, Western, Eastern, Southern, UConn, NBCC, University of Tennessee, Connecticut College, US Coast Guard, Capital Community, Goodwin, Three Rivers Community, Middlesex. Educational partners included the Witness Stones Project, the Amistad Center at the Wadsworth, Puerto Rican Latino Content Development Committee, the Study of Popular Music, Connecticut Commission for Educational Technology, Citywide Youth Coalition, African Caribbean American Parents of Children with Disabilities, Students for Educational Justice, Connecticut Council for Reform, Gilderler Mam, uh, Center, and Teach for America, and including state representatives as well on this committee. Course overview, uh, you can, you can read this slide, so I, I won't read it for you, but, um, there, there is a broad, uh, there's a, there's a, a broad coverage in this course. It is a one-year credit, one-credit, year-long elective course that is being offered, uh, to upper-grade students, and I, I believe Vida's gonna, I'll, I mean, or I'll cover that a little bit more of that on the next slide. But this is a, a year-long course that really looks at, uh, US history, society, economy, culture um, throughout the years up until the present time. As I mentioned, it's a four-year course in Semester 1. The focus is on African-American and Black history, and the Semester 2 transitions over to focus on Puerto Rican Latino history. This is an elective class for 11th, 12th graders. Uh, as of, as of right now, that was the, the recommendation from, um, uh, from the advisors and from the state via CERC. CERC was the company that was really the one that drove this work. Uh, CERC, uh, was the one that was asked by the state, uh, to be the collaborators in this work, and so kudos to them to be able to pull in, um, all these experts to be able to write this curriculum. It is aligned with the Connecticut Social Studies Framework, but it also includes, uh, many of the ELA proficiency standards that we also, uh, align our curriculums with as well. And, uh, on here with me is, uh, Vida Harris, our Social Studies Supervisor, who was able to also be part of this really important work, um, was able to attend the meetings, uh, uh, consistently across, uh, the, the, the last year or so, um, um, being integral to the, to the development of this curriculum. And we are so lucky to have her to be an expert in this curriculum, to be able to also deliver it to our Social Studies, uh, teachers here in the district, and I'll have her go over a few slides.
Good evening, uh, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, as well as Board of Ed Commissioners. Uh, Darren, um, went over with the previous, uh, slides, but on the, if you did receive the PowerPoint in a presentation, the previous slide has the PDF attached, uh, hyperlink, and in parentheses are the page numbers, uh, to the PDF if you want to go along with it. Uh, the course overview, uh, in summary of the course, it was sent, it was shared to us by CERC so that every program of studies across the state has the same summary of the course. Um, and this, you'll go to, on page 11, and you'll find the scope and sequence to, um, of the, uh, course. And, uh, basically, what is nice about this is that every student in Connecticut is having the same material given to them. They have the same curriculum, uh, with the same hyperlinks, and the same training is given to all the teachers. So, I think that is very, and it's important to us. Semester 1, um, focuses on African-American and Black, uh, history, and it has six units. Uh, units 1 through 3, it is, uh, it basically covers the African origins and their contributions to civilizations where they were enslaved, traded, their struggle to gain freedom, um, equality and social justice. Here is where, uh, they also have specific in each of the units. What is nice is they make that connection to the history of Connecticut. So, in each unit, they have the topic, and then they also have lessons that cover what happened here in Connecticut. Um, uh, also, they, in units 1 and 2 is where they cover slaves. They were very specific on slaves here in Connecticut. Units 4 through 6 starts with Reconstruction, and what I like about this is we ask our students, we're going to ask the students, is, was Reconstruction helpful or did it work? And it allows our kids, by giving them the tools, the primary documents, and get, teaching them the skills, they have to come to the conclusion that was Reconstruction, um, if it was a failure? And then it goes into Jim Crow laws, into the Great Migration, covers the Harlem Renaissance, and all the way up to present-day Black Lives Matter. And it ends with, what are the greatest issues facing Blacks and African-Americans in the US today? And also brings it back to what goes on here in Connecticut. And at the bottom, we have, um, it, there's hyperlinks there as well for the At-A-Glance units, um, for you to look at. So then, if you go to Semester 2, it's the Puerto Rican Latino Studies, and that here, there's only five units, and here, one major difference between units 1 and 2 is, or Semester 1 and 2, I should say, Semester 1 is taught chronologically. Semester 2 is taught thematically, which was interesting, um, the difference in it. So here, um, we have a, uh, Unit 1 deals with the identity of Latinos and how, uh, that identity has evolved over time. Unit 3, it focuses on the politics and the economic policies that have helped or hindered social and economic growth in the past, and it also touches upon present-day. Uh, Unit 4 is Latin American independence, Haitian revolution, um, and the struggle for Puerto Rican independence and how Latinos have used, uh, which have they, how they use art and music to resist and to protest. Uh, Unit 5 is the impact and contributions that Puerto Ricans and Latinos have had here in Connecticut, and what additional impact they might have in the future. So, it's, it touches on, in the past, and then it brings it up to present-day, which a lot of times our kids, uh, question. So, the resources that, um, we have, CERC has released a list of resources. There's a hyperlink there, and it also has been made public on, uh, their site. So, it's been six, uh, pages of resources, and we have looked into, uh, them. What is important is this, uh, focus is that they do not want a textbook for the class. They want, um, stu-, it to be student-driven, and if you look at, uh, the curriculum, there's hyperlinks. Everything is here for the major, the teachers to have access, and it's quick. There is a PDF on the site where teachers can download, and they have live, uh, hyperlinks that will be updated. Uh, beyond that, uh, the Connecticut State Department of Ed has created a digital platform. It's called Go Open CT. So, teachers are able to go onto the website, put what grade they are teaching, what level, uh, they're teaching, the topic, and it'll bring up lessons for you with everything spelled out for you from start to finish, with the documents they need, with the, how they're going to assess, uh, our kids. So, I thought that was, that, that's just new. It's brand-new. Then we have the Speakers Bureau. They're compiling a list of local dignitaries and, uh, professors and politicians, all that, um, that will be able, that we have, will have access to. And I asked for an updated list, and it's, it's still being compiled, but they said that by the start of school, it will be here with all educators. And next week is the week that the Waterbury team will be attending a week-long, uh, professional development that CERC is leading.
Uh, thank you, uh, Vida. Appreciate those updates. And so, just to close this off, uh, that was a great transition, uh, Vida, and I know at the Curriculum Committee and, uh, those on the committee, they, they, uh, hopefully, I, I know they were as excited as we were to bring it. What were you, uh, blessed that the, that students are gonna be able to access this curriculum for next year if the Board approves? And, um, one of the questions we had was making sure that those that need the professional learning to be able to properly teach this course get that, and so we, we did give that feedback to CERC, and, and I think CERC was on top of it. They were aware of it. They realized that not every teacher comes with the skills to be able to teach this. Uh, so, there is a pretty comprehensive list of professional learning, uh, uh, which started on July 14th, which many of us attended. There's a week-long session, uh, next week, as, uh, Vida, uh, alluded to, where our Waterbury teachers will be attending. Vida will be following that up with a professional learning on August 24th with those teachers. CERC will continue that training quarterly throughout the year, um, with a culminating PD on June 9th to share best practices with, uh, other educators across the state. And what you don't see in here is those, obviously, uh, those, those daily, uh, weekly, monthly meetings that Vida will have with department chairs to, uh, monitor the progress of the program. And, uh, and, and remember, this is, this is year one of implementation of curriculum, and this curriculum, like any other curriculum we, we bring before the Board, um, there's, there's, there's bumps. There's, uh, sometimes certain classes are going faster than others. Uh, and so, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned here, one of implementation of curriculum, I think. Um, but we're just so excited to, to bring it, uh, to you tonight and get it going, and, um, and, and part of the execution on our part would be to make sure that teachers are feeling supported, uh, students are, are, are truly, uh, mastering the concepts and skills within the, that, uh, that curriculum, and, uh, we will be continuing to provide them, uh, with, with the best possible, uh, implementation, uh, we, we can deliver. As mentioned, we do have six teachers that will be leading, uh, this course on their campus this year. Uh, there's 289 students currently registered for the course, but we have over 300 students that, uh, inter-, uh, that were interested in, in this as even a possible second choice, and so as, uh, schedules kind of shake their way out, we'll see what that final number is, but we know 289 are signed up right now. Uh, Waterbury will, uh, account for five out of the 40 high schools that are piloting this curriculum this year, so we've got a pretty good, uh, standing there in terms of, uh, state representation. And, um, and, and, uh, you know, recently, uh, uh, I know Dr. Ruffin was able to attend a workshop um, on, um, some materials being, uh, being, um, uh, recommended from the State Department. We're looking into those curriculum materials. Part of our, um, uh, presentation later regarding SRRP includes additional curriculum material, um, purchases, and, uh, we're looking to, to those materials to provide younger students, um, some more support and, uh, some curriculum that could build, uh, as a foundation that leads to this higher-level elective course uh, in the younger grades, so that we can implement this, uh, uh, this, this, uh, this type of learning um, that isn't just, has to be one course, but maybe in, uh, what does it look like in kindergarten? What does it look like in third grade? What does it look like in fifth grade? What does it look like in ninth? So that students are entering this course with a strong foundation to be successful. Um, and then, of course, there's always the opportunity, um, after year one, to, to, to make it better, to see what else we can do, and, and can this lead to some other advanced type of course eventually into the district? You know, this doesn't have to be just the one-all, be-all, the only course that we ever offer, but it is going to be year one. Uh, we're, we're, we're gonna have some bumps in the road, but, uh, you know, this has been a long time coming, and we're excited to bring this to you, uh, tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Vida. Uh... Melissa Serrano Adorno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Darren and Vida, I do have to apologize that during our curriculum or our committee meeting, I didn't have my notes with me. I had an emergency with my pet, so I didn't have my questions with me. So, I do wanna apologize in advance because I do have, uh, several questions or comments. Um, one of the first things that I noticed, obviously, I'm super excited about this curriculum. Let me just start off by that. Um, but I think, based on the semesters, they, they should switch the order on which they teach the course. So, like, they should start with the Latino culture in the first semester, which is in time for the Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs in September to October, and then teach the African-American culture in the springtime for, just in time for the Black History Month in February or March. Any particular reason why they did it the opposite? I, I just thought it would be better to be coincidental to run during those times of, um, Heritage Month and, and, uh, celebrations.
Yeah, we can give that feedback to CERC and, and, and let them know. I mean, and so we'll see if other districts have similar comments, and, and we can, we can certainly give that feedback.
Thank you, Darren. Another, uh, like I said, I have several, so I apologize. Um, in the advisory group, did they ever consider having students involved in making suggestions on this curriculum?
What they do.
I know I saw, like, the youth leader, but I noticed there were majority, you know...
Yeah, I I think what they're really heavily, at least from the the meetings I was able to attend in beta, you can jump in if if you heard something different, but. I think a lot of, you know, in terms of the development, they were looking at the 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 professionals, the professors, the local community. Numbers to develop it, what they're counting on students is the feedback, what they're counting on students is. You, you, because remember, we're, we're implementing at full force, but we're only. You know, five of forty high schools, they're, they're counting on students for their feedback in the upcoming year. To be able to make those changes that every curriculum has to make after a first year of implementation, and so. Um, I think that's what they're counting on is student voice after implementation and um suggestions going from there.
Okay, and eventually I will forward these to you um as well, but. Um, in unit five in the second semester in the curriculum, it does mention the Latina woman, but it's more based on modern concepts. Um, as a suggestion, I kind of wanted them to add more of the women's contributions. To that unit like for the Latina woman, the same for the unit six. For the, you know, African American and black women possibly incorporate more about their contributions. Um, that was just a a suggestion. Another thing that I did realize um in unit four and five in the Latino study. I I kind of thought that this curriculum was going to include more of other Latino races. Um, I pretty much saw like Puerto Rico, Mexico, a little bit about Guatemala. Um, but it was also more about immigration and DACA. But they don't talk about other Latinos such as Cubans and Venezuelans, which are currently suffering from recent inhumane conditions. Um, they should also been, you know, maybe speak a lot about um. The Brazilians and Colombian Peruvians who was actually having a communist issue currently as well. So I feel like it's lacking or missing history of South American countries, which also include Afro Latinos. So just something maybe like you said for CERC to really think about, and again, I didn't have time to check the PDF links. Um, so I will do that when I have more more time. Um, another thing that I did mention, which I think is important, and I think you might get this feedback uh for your students. Is um, I definitely would suggest talking about the LGBTQ plus. And both the Afro and Latino races and how it impacts them in their own race. Because I think that's large in the community and it and it comes to, you know, with their history. Um. One other thing, um, I think I'm almost done Darren and and Veda. There, I I know Ms. Gopi had mentioned during the committee meeting, um, there's not a lot of mentioning on music, dance, or even food. Um, I know in chapter four point four, uh, they mentioned songs, but there's form of protest. Uh, protests are such as resistance to colonial status in Puerto Rico. Uh, again, I have to double check the links, but there's even an activity based off the music that the students listen to today. Um, in lesson six point three, Black Culture Production talks about the arts and music of African Americans, but these aren't celebratory or correlated to heritage or tradition at all. But it's more rather Afro Latina art continues to be involved in political propaganda. So I did recently clicked on one of the links, I did that today in the PDF file. And it did include a Spanish Arabic mu- music, which was very nice to see, and actually it it was pretty soothing. Um, but I I do want to keep continue, but I want that to kind of. You know, that that is a part of our our history and what actually connects us, which leads me to my last comment or question, Darren. Look happy, we could applaud. They should have had to me, in my opinion, maybe you could recommend this to CERC for either the following year, because I know this is already in place. To have a unit or a section dedicated to the collaboration between both the African American and Hispanic communities. Uh, such as Blacks and Latinos Collaborate for Civil Rights and Economical Justice. Um, the value of uh African American and Latino coalitions to the American South. You know, to just to be able to explore these differences as well as the similarities. To be able to initiate an open discussion amongst both races, so I appreciate the separation of each. But I would also like to see the history of how they collaborated together, because we do have differences, but we also have similarities. And thank you so much Darren or Vida, if you have any comments or questions, but I would gladly forward this to you, I apologize again for the lengthiness. Um, but I took the time to really go through it, I do have the hard copy. And I and I'm super excited, so I want to make sure that the students get the most out of this. Curriculum, because I think it's, it's amazing, it's a long time coming and I'm so proud that Waterbury is one of the cities that is going to be able to implement this for our district, so. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you Darren and Veda for your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno, I think Commissioner Charles Stango, your hand was up next.
Commissioner, can I just, can I just make a few quick comments so they don't just leave, stay there and there?
Make them quick, we're running out of time.
I will, um, just, I want to thank you for that and just. Uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, you know, I think you just highlighted why this can't be just one standalone course, because. You can't fit everything into one course, you just, you can't, you can't do it. It's already two hundred fifty page curriculum, and so it's, you bring up everything you brought up, I I was with you a hundred percent. Yes, important for our students, I have no disagreements on my part. Um, and I'll remind you that Ms. Gopi also said she didn't read the curriculum, she just made that comment, but if you actually go back and look through it. Um, there is a lot of music, like I think Veda did the same thing, I went and started tabbing them and then I stopped tabbing them because I saw. There's a lot of gospel, there's a lot of um, a lot of, a lot of song, uh, especially in the first semester, and so. Um, but but again, if there's also going to be a lot of teacher. Ability to be able to flex a little bit on this, but you just, you kind of made the point. Um, with all of your comments, I agree with everything you said, Commissioner. It just, it can't be one standalone course, we can't put all of our eggs in this basket to be the one place where kids learn this, it has to be in their education. Throughout Waterbury Public Schools, uh, so I appreciate you, I'm with you on that. We, we, we got to find a way to to make that happen all the way through the curriculum, not just in one course.
Thank you, Darren, and I know we mentioned during the committee, it whatever can't maybe possibly fit in the curriculum. Could be maybe somehow implemented during the celebrations that, you know, Adela Jorge, you know, you know, so that's just correct during the celebratory.
Absolutely, celebrations and and these are teachers that teach other courses who are going to learn from this course as well, so thank you.
Thank you, guys, uh, Charles Stango, I think your hand was up next.
Okay, Mister. Okay, Mr. President, thank you, uh, just a couple of quick questions, Darren. And uh, you can answer them as briefly as you can, I. Uh, first of all, I just want to say that I was impressed with this uh work. That I saw on computer screen, I have to be like, uh, Commissioner. Um, Melissa Serrano Adorno and get a hard copy because I can't follow it so much on that screen. Uh, but I did make some observations, um, you guys did a great job on it and it must a lot of work by a lot of people. Um, quick question number one is, uh, if this curriculum is mandated by the state. Do we still have to vote on it? I mean, can we, can we turn up with a vote? No, not that that would happen. Um, and then we don't have to do it, I mean, what's the deal on that? Darren.
Uh, I wouldn't dare tell the board that um, their vote wouldn't matter, so I I I I do think. I I don't know what the answer is to that, I know that this is mandated by the state to offer it, and so, and this is the first time, so I I believe it's in law. That we have to offer it, um, and so. As you said, Commissioner Stango, I I, you know. Being here long enough, I guess I could say this, I wouldn't foresee that being a problem here in Waterbury, I'm not sure if other communities and committees, what what's going to happen if that does come up. Um, but I I I know that it is in law that we must offer this course next year.
Okay.
If I may just, um, if, Mr. President, if I could just expand on the requirement, I I can give that info.
Go for it.
Thank you, sorry, Charles, I just wanted to uh, uh, bring in the exact, uh. Uh, the exact bill says we must offer a uh. Not, not. Uh, a mandatory course, an elective. Um, and it must be offered, it must be in our offerings by next year. Um. Now, we already had some curriculum, but it didn't necessarily. It wasn't as extensive as what the expectation was here, so just to clarify that, uh, it is law. Uh, must be offered as an elective. Uh, and it's supposed to be in by next school year, not this September, so we're actually a year ahead of the game. Also, so just, just for that clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben Stone. Charles, were you all set with your question?
No, I have a few more, if you don't mind.
Please, please hurry, we're running out of time.
Okay. I'm going to pass, uh, Darren, how are the teachers chosen uh to um, for that to be their assignment?
Uh, I know Veda worked with the principals, uh, kind of did a a look at the the courses. Uh, that the teachers uh have already taught, one, uh, number two, their effectiveness, number three, their background and willingness to teach the course and their interest in the course. And um, and so it's a, it's a mix of a few things, but um, we wanted teachers that were highly motivated to teach the course to start this off, and that's, that's where we started.
Okay, thank you, next question quickly would be, uh, what level of rigor would you say that this course is? I I realize it's only one credit and there's a lot of stuff there. Um, in regards to uh student assessments, will they be written, will there be a pen and paper final exam?
Yeah, all of our, all of our courses have exams, um, and so yes, there will be exams. Uh, uh, through this course, and I I would say that although it's being offered as eleventh and twelfth grade. There were a lot, a lot of college professors on this curriculum rating, and so it's. It's, it's a, it's a diff, it's a, I don't want to say difficult, it is a rigorous course, it is a rigorous course for sure, but. I think one that um attracts a lot of engagement and interest of students and anticipate uh students to do well on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and and lastly, in reviewing the curriculum, I see that Black Lives Matter is listed for a presentation and also for a possible speaker. Now, BLM is just one group of many activist groups. Um, regarding this um. This curriculum, um, much controversy surrounds this one uh group. And and, but I do agree that students should be aware of Black Lives Matter and and learn about it. However, students, in my opinion, students should also be made aware of and discuss other alternative views. And philosophies, some perhaps more conservative. For example. Students should learn about the Robert Woodson Institute and or the Congress for Racial Equity. I didn't see those listed or anything like them. Can you shed light on that, is anything like that in this curriculum? Where because I see that Black Lives Matters is there, I just feel that there should be. An alternative discussion, an alternative view, an alternative philosophy, can you shed some light on that? And then I'd be.
Yeah, sure, I think that the idea of adding Black Lives Matter is, and in terms of the the final unit. Is because it's, it's, it's just the movement of the day that is, that is the the most contemporary. And I would say the most popular in terms of activism. Um, as as I think all would know that, and so. I and and then I think in anything, Commissioner Stango, it is not as if it is being presented as this is the right way of thinking, but this is a. Way an activism, this is a movement, and these are the beliefs behind that movement, let students decide if that is a movement they agree with or not. Um, is part of the critical thinking we want in all of our courses, and so. Why the other uh, um, organizations that you spoke of are not. Uh, part of this, we could give that feedback to CERC for sure, to see if there was some balance there. Um, but I do want to make sure I I I I answer that about uh Black Lives Matter. Um, because again, presenting students with controversial facts is not new to education. Uh, it's what students can do and critically think about those controversial facts, which is uh makes it, I think, a strong, strong democracy.
Okay, uh, I I hear you, I understand you, um, but I'm going to be looking for more of the other views and philosophies. If I don't see them, I may not be able to support this um program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango, Commissioner Karen Harvey, I see your hand.
Yes, President Gunn, I understand we're on a a time constraint here, but I I just would like to. Take some time, um, just to go in 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 this while it's on my mind. Um, I think it's, it's very important that our students be able to. Um, learn about the, what's going on now, and they know about Black Lives Matter. So um, with having said that, um, I would hope that those who are listening, which I invited a lot of folks to listen in. Uh, because of this presentation, to give us feedback on what you've heard. But also, if you don't do that, then to give us feedback of his students to give us feedback. On um, how they feel about this, this uh course, but just real quickly, and I have more to say next week. Um, is uh, what kind of perked my ears Darren was. That um, the mention of a speakers, a a list of speakers, local speakers, and I'd like to know who is putting that list together. Um, because uh, just to make sure, I mean, I'm glad CERC did it, but CERC doesn't know about Waterbury. So I just want to make sure that uh, they're getting the proper information and Tuesday from, you know, the list of folks. Who are local, who could shed light on what has happened here in Waterbury as it relates to uh the national uh level. Darren, so you can give me that, so a little feedback on that.
CERC is, CERC is compiling that list now, so there's options if there's local. Uh, people that are listening uh to this presentation and that you are aware of it, that can bring more to this and want to get on to the. Not just the Waterbury, but the 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 New Haven region area, I mean, I think CERC would be open. Uh, for any of those, we have. Um, some local, we, we have some local leaders that were part of the development of this curriculum. Um, and so I see, you know, people, not just Veda and I, but Warren Leach and a few other people who were listed in the advisory group, as people that signed up to to take part in this, so. Um, but, but in addition to that, uh, Commissioner Harvey, uh, there will be opportunities, we we talked about this at the the curriculum committee, is that. Um, you know, year one, we're going to be able to get our 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 feet wet and 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 learn how how the piecing goes for this this course. And get a good idea of um, what local um, uh, uh, local, local uh historians, local experts could bring. And enhance this curriculum, and it will give us a really good idea of who we could. How, of who can bring in, when we can bring them in, and what parts of the curriculum to do that, so CERC is creating uh that list, but that doesn't. Necessarily mean that we won't be able to uh be able to lean on our local experts, as long as it aligns to the curriculum and the objectives, the goals within the, within the uh. The curriculum, uh, we're certainly open for that. Um, um, but uh, and they, and and similar to Commissioner. Or Dorno, uh, Serrano Adorno, is we'd also don't want to put this one course as the only course that where this is possibly going to happen, and so. Again, it's a two hundred and fifty, sixty page curriculum uh for a full year course. And so, you know, the the local experts, if they don't align exactly with what this course has to offer. We have to find ways in other courses to then and see where they can possibly align. Um, but also through our celebrations, through local speaking, through just mentorship. Uh, can also be used, and so with a long winded answer uh to to the question, so it's, it's, there's, there's, to to boil it down. CERC, uh, I would, I would recommend them to contact CERC and and uh. And either Veda and Veda can put them in contact with CERC, if you, if you, if you send it to P. Harris. At waterbury.k twelve dot C T dot U F, Veda will get that over to start to add them to the list.
Can you, can you email that to me Darren, and I just want to cut you off a little bit, because I I just want to get into some other stuff, we got seven o'clock right now. But I I'm good, I'm good with your response. One other thing that I wanted to emphasize was that. Uh, um, yeah, Jay Gopi uh brought up a really good point about the music, et cetera, and we talk about that, I'm sure. Um, African American studies with um, you know, the Black uh Renaissance, et cetera. Um. We have our local. Uh, Matatuck Museum, which just recently opened, reopened, and the things that they're doing culturally. You know, I would hope that we would include them in on what we're doing, particularly with this course. Uh, because they're, they have an exhibit going on now, um, and they have just kind of re. Juvenated this whole thing about culture and and culture that's going on in the city, that would hope we could, we could. Kind of tap into some of that, uh, we alre- already use uh Matatuck Museum for other things, I think with our fifth graders, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, looking on the budget. But we really need to tap into what they are doing, the superb job they are doing with the cultural, culture. Um, here in the city of Waterbury. Um, and lastly, again, I would hope that the people that are listening, I'm fishing up, President Gunn. Those who are listening in uh via email, whatever the case may be, to give us feedback. On just what you heard, this is not a one and done, as as Darren said, but, and this is a pilot. So we can improve upon it or make revisions, whatever, but um, I I just want to hear that feedback of students, from parents. Community leaders, et cetera, so that's all I have, President Gunn, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Harvey. Anyone else have a comment for Darren or VEDA? I don't see anybody else's hands waving, so thank you very much, everyone. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's update. Dr. Ruffin, you have two parts. An A and a B, it looks like, no, an A. The American Rescue Plan, ARP, and then the ESER release presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and uh, all Commissioners, my presentation is not short. And uh, and it is, um, you know, I, I feel that it's important to go through it all with you. Um, to get your, your feedback and to also let everyone know where we're headed with this. Because it is one of the most, um. One of the hugest pros, projects that we will be working on, that. Has the potential to impact this district in ways that we have never been able to do before. And so that is to discuss with you, uh, and show you, uh, a, a summary of what. Has been happening over the cover, course of many months. And to explain what the next steps are in receiving not only your feedback and, and input. But also that of the community and all of our stakeholders, and I think that, um, I, I. I, I understand that it's a little bit long, but it is the American Rescue Plan. For elementary and secondary school emergency release, in other words, we call this sometimes ESER three. And most people may know it as ARP ESER or ARC ESER. But it's uh, the eighty-nine plus million dollars that, uh, we are recipients of. And the plan for how we're going to use that to be able to impact our district in a very meaningful way. Uh, tag teaming with me tonight will be Darren Schwartz and Doreen Biolo. And there is a presentation that we will show on the screen and we will speak to them. Uh, uh, we definitely want to leave some time for questions and, and input. And know that this is not the final or at all, but it has taken a very long time. To compile all of the comments that. Teachers, staff, families, community, principals, board members. City, uh, uh, officials have given us over the course of many, 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 many months. You know, if you remember, that we've always had a need to do things that we could not afford. Uh, and so when we were recipients of ESER two, we were excited to place some of those needs. Within ESER two, and when we received the ARP ESER. And had an opportunity to put some of those things that we could not possibly have imagined being able to do. Into a draft presentation, it, it took into consideration what everybody said. And presents it to you tonight in such a way that you could see where it falls within the five required categories of ARP ESER. And then leads us to the next steps, which is a, 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 a massive communication. With multiple stakeholders to see if they see themselves in what they've, they've told us over the last two years. Into this ARP ESER. So we're going to take uh, that from the very beginning. Uh, I will present some and Darren and Doreen, you just jump in. If you can just go to that next slide. These are the five required categories that we must meet in order to have. An ARP ESER application, which is due on August sixteenth. We, we must address learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. Sometimes you'll see this category categorized as learning loss, which I don't believe is accurate because I don't believe our students lost as much as. They, they did learn something, but it's totally different the way that they learned it during COVID. Uh, and so the acceleration, moving students on, making students assure that they're going to be successful as we move forward. Has to be in this first category of the ARP ESER plan. Family and commu- family and community connections, it's huge and it's been on the board's mind for a very long time. Include, it is included in the strategic plan, it was included in ESER two, and now you see it as a requirement in ARP ESER as well. Social, emotional, and mental health of the students and the school staff. That has always been high priority, and while we were not able to afford it during ESER one. We see that we were able to implement some things at ESER two, and now you see it as a big component in ARP ESER. The next category, strategic use of technology, staff development, and the digital divide, that was huge in ESER two. But it becomes even larger in ARP ESER and, and it becomes one of the fourth. Priorities within this ARP. Uh, and then finally, the building safe and healthy schools. We've long heard about the, you know, the, the conditions of buildings and, and making them, um. Better ventilation and how do we really create an environment that is conducive to learning for all of our thirty-three buildings? And what does that look like and how are we able to do that? Uh, and, and so this building safe and healthy schools is a big component of what we have to write this application for in the ARP ESER. And then as we go to the next slide, we will begin to see some of the, um. The, the, some of the differences. So you'll see ESER one, which was in March of twenty twenty. This was to try to get us to survive, because we were struggling with the pandemic, the beginnings of the pandemic. ESER two, forty-one million, six hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars. And that was awarded in December of twenty-one. And it addressed those components that I just discussed with you, and that was to be able to get us so we could. You know, thrive in, during, and in the midst of COVID, but still with some plans about how are we going to reopen schools. And ESER three really allows us an opportunity to rethink and reimagine where we, where we're going. And, and actually look at prioritizing all of those things that you, as well as others, have told us were essential to be able to move our district forward. Uh, moving to the next slide, and that's eighty-nine million, six hundred ninety-one dollars and, uh, six hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars. So a, a huge amount of money, when, when you look at what we could potentially do in the district. It's very important that we are intentional about it and that we can have a return on our investment. In other words, as a result of this funding, we should be able to say that we've done something very significant that is. Demonstrated through performance in Waterbury Public Schools. This is the timeline. And you'll see that at this point, you know, we, we started in March, uh, you know, we had some milestones that we had to hit in May. And in June, and of course July, putting some, some things together, and in July, uh, uh, and August. What you're going to see now is a product or a draft of what we've heard for the last two years. And then, uh, continued efforts to go out and get community feedback. So that we could write the application and submit it on August sixteenth. We have to spend this money, no, and use it, and it, into effect no later than September of twenty twenty-four. Darren, would you want to start with the academic supports, learning loss, and learning acceleration and recovery? And then Doreen, do the next one, and then we'll just tag team.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Doctor. Uh, good evening again, Board. Uh, as you know, the academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery. Um, is the first priority, um, and in ESER ARP. Twenty percent of the funding has to go to address learning loss. Now, that doesn't mean it's all in priority one, some learning loss is also tied to social emotional development. And a few other areas, uh, but you will see on the, on the screen, a survey response from when we, um. Uh, talk to students about what they're looking for, and the staff survey response as well, uh, for what they're looking for as well. Um, as you can see on the next page, uh, of that total funding, fifteen million, nine hundred ninety thousand would be going to this area. Um, some of the highlights in this area are, would be to develop a virtual academy if. Um, we have proper, uh, staffing to be able to do so. Um, to update all curriculum and assessments, um, and, and, um, and, and, and technology in those curriculum and assessments. That's the big bulk of this, of, of this funding. Uh, to offer additional courses in high school, again, um, alluded to additional courses, not just. During the day, but also possibilities of additional courses after school hours, uh, virtually for students to earn, um, credits. Career counselors for students, not school counselors or guidance counselors, as, as some people know them as, but career counselors. To, um, uh, support students and, and to the what's next after graduation. Portrait of a gradu- graduate, to take the portrait of a graduate, really expand on that. Create mastery-based learning opportunities, assessment and supports tied to our portrait of the graduate, so. It, uh, it goes from, um, being a great graphic and some great talking points to really truly being in a classroom on a daily basis. For, for students and staff. We want to provide one-on-one instructional tutors using our current staff within the, the district, finding the most effective teachers at any school and offering them an opportunity. To, uh, virtually go into students' cu- uh, do students' homes on off-hours. To be able to provide that one-on-one instructional support beyond the school day. And in addition to that, there is a highlight of the summer enrichment and learning, uh, this includes the summer enrichment, many of, uh. Some very effective, uh, summer, uh, courses that we offered. Uh, this year, as you know, we offered three sections in the summer for high school students, first time ever we've done that. We also, uh, worked with community organizations such as, uh, the Y and the Boys and Girls Club. To offer students free scholarships to those programs throughout the summer. I'll just keep going here, uh, oh, sorry, Doreen, go ahead.
I could do it, that's okay.
You got it.
Thanks, Darren. So a priority two, um, pertains to family and community connections. Um, you'll just see like of the survey here, uh, as posted and, and what some of the responses were. Um, with the families, um, obviously staying connected, um, even during COVID time. Um, staying connected with the students and with their families. And what we needed to do during that time and Google Classroom, um, as you can see, was a great platform for our students to use and, and to communicate with their teachers. Um, they couldn't be in person. So in this category, um, we have an estimated budget amount of one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Um, we also have a lot of, um, parent involvement and, and also of family and community. Um, funding through other grants and entitlements. Um, so when you look at that one point, one million, five eighty-three, I, I, you know, it's, it's not that we're not putting enough in here, we do have other funding. Um, in other areas as well, um, that we're, uh, maximizing, um, for this area. So some of the highlights. Um, would be, um. Some art and cultural experiences, so kind of engaging in some enrichment programs with the community. Um, so students and families can, you know, maybe attend museums, uh, we can have passes for them to attend museums. Um, some, um, theater programming, um, things that they can get involved with, um, in the community. And, and kind of bring family, students, family together, and the community together. So those are some of the things we're talking about for art and cultural enrichment programs. Um, another idea is to, um, make some of our schools possibly a community school. Uh, we would need coordinators to step into that, um, role, so. We have that budgeted, um, under family and community connections. Also expanding training in new technology for teaching and learning tools for parents and families. That could be an expansion to our welcome center, um, and providing all types of resources and supports, uh, for families. And, uh, lastly, continue to strengthen communication, um, and translation capacity. Um, we also had put this amount, um. In ESER two, we feel it's important to continue and we're remaining, uh, this line item in ESER three. Um, to provide, uh, translation support, um, that teachers can use over the phone to support, uh, parents, um. In all different languages.
I can jump in, or Doc, you have it?
You can take that one if you want, I'll take the next one, and then Doreen can take the next one.
That sounds like a deal. So school safety, uh, and social emotional well-being, a lot of that learning loss is also, um, embedded in this as well. Um, and, uh. You know, I, 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 I'm really excited, uh, you know, usually I'm the academic guy, but I'm really excited for some of the things that we'll be offering for, uh, students here as well. Um, estimated funding, um, five million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-six. Um, increasing the number of school counselors to ensure capacity at every school all the way through the school system. I did about, uh, bringing the counseling work to, to all students, but also, um, rude. Really cool idea that, 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 uh, that we're working with, uh, on an RFP four, which is this counseling beyond school hours. And, uh, this is, we know many of our students have, um, questions, concerns, have fastback questions. Uh, counseling concerns, um, um, college application question. That they're usually asking those questions like at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night, and nobody's there to answer those questions because. Um, the school day ends for most of our counselors by two-thirty, so. Um, working, uh, to access counseling beyond school hours, whether it be our school counselors or an organization that. Has established reputation in this area, uh, would be important for us to offer students. Uh, beyond the, the, the typical seven to two-thirty timeframe. Uh, we're also excited to offer that professional learning, I think in ESER two, we have a social emotional learning curriculum. Uh, in ESER two, and then we're going to continue offering professional learning for our staff in that social emotional learning. Uh, here we also have mentors, mentors for staff, mentors for students embedded into this. And then, um, one of the bigger chunks here is also a multi-tiered support system for pupil services and special education. And so, uh, really beefing up our ability to pro- provide, uh, staffing and support for students. Um, as their needs have continued to grow, especially through the pandemic for our students. Uh, making sure that we have a multi-tiered system of support, uh, uh, for students outlined and having. Uh, just, not just the program, but the staff available to, to do that.
The next one is the, uh, remote learning, uh, staff development and the digital divide. Um, we, we've certainly experienced what that felt like during the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. Uh, we believe that the remote learning, of course, the staff development and the digital divide is something we're going to be laser focused on. We do have a one-to-one implementation in the district and we want to continue that. Um, in, uh, this particular priority, we, uh, recommending or suggesting as a draft for board discussion. Eleven million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars, that will help us to not only. Remain in active mode to provide the, um, resources for enhanced technological learning. But also we want to invest in teacher recruitment and retention. Um, you know, we, we do, our challenge with, when surrounding districts can do more than Waterbury. So we want to make certain that teacher recruitment and retention is something that we not only have in our strategic plan, but we place this. In, um, the ARP, uh, ESER, and that we continue to provide equity training, it's ongoing. That we have staff incentives to cross endorse, we do, we do that, we want to continue to do that. And be more robust in our delivery of those, uh, uh, services. Uh, we want to invest in the technology for teaching and learning, that's not only providing the. And teachers, but also how, how do they use it when technology literally continues to advance on a regular basis? Uh, teaching people and so that they can be comfortable utilizing a tool that is going to be forever changing. Uh, the teacher sign-on bonuses that we want to implement so that we could recruit. The teacher sign-on bonuses for hard-to-fill positions, we are at a, at a critical point in our district. Where there are some positions that have been vacant for a very long time and we need to be competitive with surrounding districts. So providing the teacher sign-on bonuses for those hard-to-fill positions. Not only brings the teacher to the table in Waterbury, but it provides what our students have been asking for. All of the courses that students ask for, if we're not able to provide teachers for them, then. It, it's a good idea, but we don't have a plan for making it happen. So the teacher sign-on bonuses are, are intended to be able to recruit teachers. It, to teach in Waterbury in hard-to-fill positions. Likewise, we recognize that our current staff also. Um, should be. um, should be in, in programs that help them to be able to continue to grow and to develop and that we pour in to our existing staff and developing a teacher leader academy uh, and the badge, the developing a badging system for professional learning whereby teachers and support staff can also be incentivized for continuing to work in Waterbury while we invest invest in their professional growth and development is very important. And that we continue to uh, aim for a diverse workforce recruitment and, and retention. And that, and within this particular priority four, we believe that those highlights encompasses many of the ideas and recommendations that we've heard uh, that we were never able to really afford and to go into very deeply to make those happen. That I believe that through A R P S R, we're able to do that.
So priority five um, is building safe and healthy schools. Continuous improvement on existing structure. Uh, we've estimated around fifty-five million one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and the highlights in this area are school-based needs. So um, this is giving the, the chance for principals and their school community and their staff um, to be able to, to point out what it is that they need at their schools that maybe they haven't gotten, that we truly need, that it's very hard for us um to fund for them in our operating budget. Um, and it's giving them a voice here um, of what they think their school needs to exceed. So um, that's a line item that we have um, in, in this section. Um, also furniture, um, furniture fixtures, equipment, F F N E. Um, you know, we want a classroom conducive to learning and some of our schools don't have the proper furniture needed. Um, you know, if you're not a school that receives maybe um, additional grant funding, um, you know, it's, it's hard for us again to budget and, and, and be able to furnish a classroom. So this is also giving, especially some of our older elementary schools, a chance um to get new furniture into the classroom and, and to make it more inviting for learning. So um, that's going to be also a line item in this section. Um, again, this uh, facilities repair um and any restoration and renovations. Um, we heard SLAM earlier discussing um, the facilities um study and, and the projects that we plan to be doing off of that. This would be a continuation of an amount that we have budgeted in S R two. Um, and being able to receive the S R funding, we could really expand a lot more on this um, in the ventilation and HVAC areas. Um, you know, for where they're, you know, obviously through COVID and, and, and to have a good air quality. Um, so you know, the facility repairs, ren- ren- renovations, restoration, ventilation and HVAC is, is a big number um, in, in this section. Um, we also are going to be doing some playground improvements. Um, I think it will be one school though receiving a new playground because they haven't had it. Um, and then some of our other um, elementary schools who haven't had the chance uh, to have their playground upgraded. Um, th- this would be um, in this section. Um, of course, with, with all of the study um, on um, facilities and repairs and renovations in the HVAC, this grant does allow for administrative costs. So you'll see that we have a project manager, um, a project manager to see us through the duration of these big, large projects um, that we'll be doing uh, for HVAC and, and renovations. Um, and we do need a project manager and it is allowable expense in S R um, for that. So we budgeted for a project manager here and some other administrative costs. Um, you know, we would need like uh, more help, um, obviously in the finance department to help monitor the funding. Uh, we would also need more um, administrative help um, for help to assist purchasing with many of the RFPs and, and bids as well as um, helping our legal counsel, um, court counsel, having some outside counsel helping with the contracts because there'll be a multitude of contracts with all the funding that we have in all of our S R um, grants that we receive from one, two, and this S R R. So those are the big items and highlights um, in this funding section.
Darren, you want to take that?
Yeah. So I mentioned earlier, twenty percent of the total budget, which would be seventeen million nine hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty cents would need to be allocated to learning loss. And um, as you can see, we've, we've hit that mark and I've gone over a little bit to ensure that we are, um, we are uh, addressing the learning loss that has occurred for our students.
I'm going to go over the next few slides very quickly, but they're still very important and we, we should, they should not be set aside as unimportant because they connect to the work that we were doing, we are doing, and we will be doing for multiple years. Uh, is that we, you know, we have that recommitment uh, to reimagine and, and think type overview. Um, we, we, we had multiple teams of people working in committees as well as in community forums, town halls, and we will continue to do that. But we took the voices of people uh, over many, many, many months to be able to apply what our, our students and everyone has said and apply it to this very complex work of writing a, a, an application grant for something that we believe could change the future of Waterbury. Um, we did solicit community input through thought exchange, through surveys, uh, open meetings, subcommittees, uh, and we will continue to do so. Uh, because we believe the voice of the community, the certainly the voice of the board, uh, the families, the students, the teachers, the support staff and everyone that has a deep desire to see Waterbury become the very best that it can be uh, has to be heard in a way that we can not only do this work, but we can sustain this work after this money goes away in twenty twenty-four. Uh, additionally, these are samples of some of the meetings that we've had and the, the collective thoughts that have been gathered and, and we actually started town halls along and community meetings and forums a long time before twenty twenty. So you're just seeing some of the ones that occurred in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, but there were many needs in our district that were identified early on that people may see embedded within S R two and certainly embedded within A R P S R. Uh, so all of these community meetings that you're seeing, um, you know, they came with a lot of information a- and feedback from many people and we have numbers uh, to be able to support that. The next uh, slide was that we're not just trying to put together and piece together a lot of things. We want coherence. Um, because you can have a lot of great ideas, but they don't connect to anything. And so we, we know that we've had issues with coherence and coherence of programs and projects. So we want this to be meaningful work that we can not only put on a piece of paper, we want to see it to the very end. Um, you know, we did draft a, a theory of action. Uh, repeatedly, our students as well as our staff will refer to the portrait of a graduate. We know that this work is meaningful to, to us in Waterbury. So if we fully support the implementation of the portrait of a graduate, then student outcomes will improve across a range of more equitable measures supported by coherent systems. And we are working very hard to try to do that uh, in an ever-changing environment. Again, some of the work that we will do moving forward, focusing on the instructional core. Uh, we want to be reflective about what we do. We want it to make a difference. Um, we want to transform our system and, and we believe that uh, A R P S R uh, and our strategic plan and our focus on portrait of a graduate, teaching and learning, family and community engagement, talent management and fiscal responsibility uh, will be something that is, is going to be laser-focused for us as we move forward. Uh, again, our very last slide um, will, will uh, show you uh, that we want to educate the whole child. We want to expand access, choice and equity across our system. We want to ensure safe, healthy schools and tools for learning and we want to prepare for the future. I will stop there and yeah, this, all of this with your feedback tonight and throughout the week. Uh, and our community forum, our webinar that is scheduled for August the ninth and August tenth. So we can engage with our, our families, community, teachers, staff, everyone who has a vested interest in making Waterbury better. Um, and this will be posted uh, on our website. We will introduce it and uh, any ideas and recommendations that we continue to get. Uh, we have also uh, sought and continue to seek input from Waterbury voices and we will continue to have the collaboratives because I believe that people should see uh, within some of these recommendations or suggestions and how we budgeted for that, that the voices of our board as well as our community have been heard. And um, so when we go out with the community, what the webinars on August the ninth and August the tenth, we continue to get feedback. We continue to take input. We revise it. All of this will be uh, written into um, into uh, the grant application, which will be submitted online on August sixteenth. After it has been submitted, after it gets approval, it will, it's a public document. It will be seen by everyone and you could see individual line items to see how this money will be spent. And also we will have to develop structures in-house to monitor the progress on the spending, the implementation and the outcomes.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, Darren, Doreen. Uh, any comments or questions on uh, on the presentation? Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, one quick question. I, I mean, the, the section with the, you know, the HVAC that appears to the school. Is that something that we're going to be waiting for SLAM to give us the recommendations?
Uh, we're not waiting on, on the, all of the recommendations from SLAM to be able to start. For example, we know that we have some projects right now that if we don't address right now, we, we won't be able to, to, to go on. So we're not going to wait for the entire uh, study to be able to do some of that critical work when we know it has to be done because we won't have another alternative. And we're engaging with uh, some of the consultants. I know that uh, you know, we, we, we have some consultancy that we've been working with. So when we have a top high priority uh, uh, repair that we have to make or replacement that we have to make, we're doing that. Um, and then of course, as SLAM will finish their reports. If there's something that's high on their priority list that we know we have to do, we won't wait because we, of the strict timeline that we have to spend the funding from this A R P S.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
I remember that when we were doing the discussions with SLAM originally, that we would think their, their recommendations as we go instead of waiting for the plan. That's that's why I'm glad we're going to be doing that. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment? Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up.
Yeah, very quickly. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a lot to take in. Um, I don't recall seeing um this presentation or in basket. Did we receive a copy of this?
I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand the question.
Did we receive a copy of this in the email? The copy of the presentation?
No, you did not.
Okay, if we can, because there was a lot to take in. Okay. Yeah. So my questions may be uh, coming later. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Commissioner Harvey, is your hand up?
Uh, yes, President McConnell, uh, quickly. Um, Dr. Ruffin, as you were going through this and, and thank you, Commissioner Van Stone, because I was going to ask if we could uh, get a copy of the presentation, but I, I think I'll wait and, and, and receive that copy of it. But I was hoping as you're going through the presentation, I understand this is not final, but I was hoping for like a graph uh, that would indicate the percentage, you know, with the money um, and the different categories of, you know, where the, that outlines the percentage of the money that's going uh, like in a pie form um, of where this money is going towards. So I, I just, uh, let, let me see it, you know, visual. Let me see it and then um, I think that would help our communities as well to see what percentage is going towards, you know, learning loss or what percentage is going towards family or, or things like that. So that's just a suggestion. So I'll wait till you send that to us and then I'll uh, make further comments. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anyone else have a question before we wrap up this section?
Well, thank you, Commissioner. So what I would like to do is I will send it to you. I would like to um, you know, schedule some informal time, not in a regular meeting, to be able to discuss it with individual board members. I would like for, because, because I feel uncomfortable putting anything in a pie chart right now because it's not final. Not final until you say so. And so uh, until we get uh, input from the community uh, as well. Um, but, but I will send all of this to you and I would like to have some individual meetings or small group meetings, not a full meeting, you know, with the full board. And then I would like the same opportunity with some of the community members and all of the community invited to the webinars, but we will be conducting other um, other opportunities to be able to discuss. For instance, for the principals and, and that have gathered some input, hopefully with their teachers, support staff and everyone on their campus to know what would best meet the needs of our campus. Especially if you remember, there was always an equity issue that some schools had more than, than others, some had grants, some didn't. Um, and so now it's an opportunity to level that playing field. And based on the, the, and we've heard a number of times, you know, teachers are saying, I don't have this, I have to buy this. Well, that should not, that should no longer be. Uh, uh, so with, but we need to know what this is. And, and we're expecting to receive that from the principals that were asked to have collaborative meetings with their staff to be able to determine, so what does this look like for you to be able to best manage your school? Uh, and then after we get the feedback, you know, our team is going to go back to work because this has to be written in narrative form inside of E grants.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, any other last questions or comments? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, President McConnell, just a quick comment. Yeah, whenever that pie chart, I think that would be very helpful. Um, and I understand that you don't put something together like that right now, but I think in the, in the, in the final presentation, I think a pie chart would be very helpful for those who can see exactly how we're, that money is being used. So that, thank you, President McConnell. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you.
Any other last questions or comments before we move on? All right. Dr. Ruffin, Darren, Doreen, thank you very much. Look forward to getting that copy so I could study it myself also. It's a little bit too much to get and coming out of the gate blindly. Um, our next agenda item, I don't think he's on the horn anymore. Uh, Zuda had a cutoff, something about his computer screwed up. So items eleven and twelve. Uh, anybody else taking for Zuda?
I can relay any questions to him.
Okay, why, I, I don't know what he had planned, so. If I see anything or if anyone has any, please uh, pass them on to uh, Doreen. Was that you?
Yeah, it was, it was me, Commissioner. Item number eleven is, is just the use of school facilities by school organizations and our city departments. It's attached to the agenda. And item number twelve is his use of facilities by outside organizations and our waiver requests, and that's attached to the agenda as well. That's all he would have said.
Okay. Uh, any comments or questions? Beautiful. Hearing none. We are now at item thirteen, the superintendent's notification to the board. Dr. Ruffin? Anything you want to add?
No, sir. It's all there.
Thank you. We are now at item finito for this agenda. We are now going to go into executive session. And uh, Commissioner Rocco Orso. At this time, we need an executive session. Uh, doctor, who will be joining us in the executive session?
Uh, Juan Mendoza will be joining as well as Tara Shaw on the, on uh, the telephone.
Thank you. Uh, Rocco, can you uh, tee up motion, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, I moved to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments before we go? All right, everyone. Thank you. We will be going into executive session and I believe you said Tara and Juan Mendoza will be joining us, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I will uh, get everybody into the proper framework here and don't hold your breath.
We are returning from our executive session, Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
I move to return to the regular order of business with the record reflecting no votes were taken.
May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Please signify if you're in agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the motion carries because the ayes have it. We are back.
Make the motion adjourned.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Please signify if you're in agreement that we are good to go by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We are now moving into a special meeting, correct?
Correct. Go right into it.
Everyone, welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Special Meeting for Thursday, August 5th. We will start off with our silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything to add on to that?
I do not, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. We are in a silent prayer and we'll be right back. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, since you did such a great job on the earlier part of our show and tell, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Of course, of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Juanita Hernandez.
You're so welcome, President Pagano.
Would Clerk Carrie Swain kindly do the roll call?
Commissioner Brown. Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Nardozzi.
Here.
Commissioner Orso.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney. Commissioner Van Stone.
President.
President Pagano.
President accounted for. Thank you very much. Commissioner Charles Stango, the Committee on School Personnel, you have the floor.
Mr. President, item 4.1, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Ivan Hernandez as Elementary Vice Principal, Chase School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to say any words?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioners, I am pleased to bring to you Ivan Hernandez and recommend him as the Vice Principal at Chase. He was very enthusiastic and excited about taking on the assignment, and I believe that he's going to do an excellent job with Chase, working with the staff and the principal, the other Assistant Principal who is at Chase. And I think that he is going to do a stellar job. He will be dearly missed at his school, Carrington, but I think he brings great energy to the district and will be an asset at Chase School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Anybody else?
He is also on, online.
I'm looking at him right now. Hello, Ivan, how are you? Anyone else have any questions or comments to add to this discussion? All right, I guess we now do a vote and then we can let Ivan do his, his two minutes of stardom. Is that correct, Carrie?
We need a roll call, Chuck.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry, Vice President Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Orso.
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Yes.
Commissioner Stango.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone.
He gets to do his thing if we vote him in, yes.
President Pagano.
An enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ivan. Welcome. And the floor is yours if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, I thank you all for giving me this opportunity. You know, as Dr. Ruffin said, I am very excited about this. I've been teaching in Waterbury for 20 years, and I look forward to stepping into the office and, and looking at it from the other end and helping to keep improving library of the school system. So, thank you for the opportunity and hopefully I won't disappoint.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Ivan. Hope to see you at Barnes and Noble more often on Sunday mornings. Commissioner Charles Stango, we return to our regularly scheduled program. You.
Mr. President, item number 4.2, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Mallory Brito as the Elementary Vice Principal, Dreg School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Commissioner Stango, thank you for the second. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to add any words?
I would. It's an honor and pleasure to recommend Mallory Brito as the Assistant Principal, Vice Principal at Dreg School. Mallory, again, very equipped and very enthusiastic, brings a lot of talent, worked in turnaround work, has done some turnaround work at North End and will continue to be an asset as a Vice Principal at Dreg. So, it's with enthusiasm that I recognize and recommend a highly enthusiastic person, lots of energy, great, great teams.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to say before we take our roll call? Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Vice President Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Orso.
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Yes.
Commissioner Stango.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Yes.
President Pagano.
Another enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Ms. Brito. And why don't you say a few words? Unmute yourself. Very good.
I appreciate the opportunity and I'm ready to get to work and I can't wait to hit out of the park for you guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We're here to support you. Let us know how we can help. Congratulations. Commissioner Charles Stango, you're back to regularly scheduled programming.
Alrighty, Mr. President, item 4.3, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Kimberly Rock as the Elementary Vice Principal of Reed School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to add any words?
Absolutely. I, it's again with a lot of enthusiasm and excitement that I recommend Kimberly Rock as the Vice Principal at Reed. She, she is energetic, she's worked at Reed, and she brings in a lot of the vision that aligns with where Reed is headed, and I'm excited about her being chosen as the Assistant Principal there. And, and actually, I think she interviewed on her honeymoon. So, I mean, my goodness. Her dedication is clearly there. So, I, I really am excited about recommending her for VP at Reed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Orso.
Hope you had a good time. Yes.
Commissioner Adorno.
Yes.
Commissioner Stango.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Yes.
President Pagano.
Another enthusiastic yes.
Another unanimous.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Rock, congratulations. The floor is yours if you'd like to say a few words to this group.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Dr. Ruffin and President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, as well as Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Schwartz for this position. I've been at Reed for the last eight years, so I'm excited to kind of leave the classroom and go into the VP role and kind of continue the work that's been started there. So, I'm really excited.
Thank you very much and congratulations from all of us. Commissioner Charles Stango, back to regularly scheduled programming.
Alrighty, Mr. President, item number 4.4, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Ann Drury as the Elementary Vice Principal of Wendell Cross School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Dr. Ruffin, any comments or whatever you want to add to the equation?
I do. Ann comes again, highly recommended. I, you know, she has a real passion for what goes on in the classroom, and I think that her dedication to being, working with Donna and opening a new school is certainly there. I think that she is going to be a great asset to the school and I look forward to great things from her. Again, she's very enthusiastic, works at, at Maloney, and, and so this is a highly recommended appointment as well, and I'm excited for her and for us.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call vote?
Vice President Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Orso.
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Stango.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Yes.
President Pagano.
An enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Welcome to the club. The floor is yours. We'd love to hear from you.
I just want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity. I've been with the Waterbury Public Schools for 27 years, enjoyed every minute of it, and I'm so looking forward to working with the Wendell Cross community to open this beautiful school, and I want to thank you again for this great opportunity.
Thank you very much and congratulations from all of us.
Thank you.
Yay. Commissioner Charles Stango, your last commercial free hour.
Last one, Mr. President, item number 4.5, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the job specifications for and new position of Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I need a second.
Oh, second. Thank you. Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, I, I want to say that when we were in a position of not having technology across the school system, this position was still one that would be needed because it was how to integrate technology with the tools that we had at the time. After March 13th of 2020, it became an absolute necessity that, that we engage in, I, I call it putting your money where your mouth is, because we, we were challenged to be able to integrate technology and not only integrate it, but actually use it as a tool for furthering learning for our, our teachers and for our students. So, I think that with the reopening of school, the way that we're reopening school and knowing that we're moving towards innovative technology for the, for the duration of, of our school system, I think it's critically important that we, we strategically place staff to be able to help teachers and to help staff develop with a requirement that we now have that everyone becomes proficient in utilizing technology for teaching and learning. So, I, I, I'm excited about the possibility of this position. I, I hope the board approves it, but that's my position on why this position is critically important as we not only say we're going to do something, but we add the supports for our teachers to be able to, to be able to actually do it.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any questions or comments before we take a vote? Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno and then Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ruffin, I, I, I agree with you, even though I always think about, you know, trying to be able to maintain teachers in our district, but have you thought about having the Alliance Fund cover this technology supervising position, or is that not allowable?
I couldn't tell you today where the funding source is. I know that, I know that we, we can certainly budget for it, but I can't tell you that it couldn't be because I, I don't know where all of the other supervisors are currently funded.
Okay, thank you.
If I may jump in, if I'm, if I may jump in, it's, it's funded in the Alliance grant.
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Darren.
Commissioner Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. You know, I had my, my comments earlier this evening in workshop with my opposition to this program. Being paid for by Alliance is actually part of, you know, my disagreement with it. You know, Alliance can be looked at for many things. Years ago, it could not be. The rules have loosened up over the years. You know, and, but basic premises, anything for improvement of your, your school, which is pretty much everything we do every day. But, you know, I just, I'm, I'm struggling with another administrative position, other supervisor. other supervisory position, uh, when we really need, uh, even if we were to use Alliance or, uh, maybe so many other grants that are coming down the road and, um, and try to come back and, and take care of some of those twenty-five, thirty special ed jobs that we need to fill or, um, any of the hundred and seventy that are listed in the, uh, the budget coming forward, so, um, I'm not going to be, be able to be in favor of this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have some? Commissioner Karen Harvey?
Yeah, here. Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm here, I got you. I, I am not sure about this position and I, you know, I just, when, when, when I think about it and the positions that we have open and then we're creating a new position and seeing how we did, yeah, we struggled, we struggled in twenty twenty, but we made it. And so, um, I don't know, I'm just really kind of struggling with this, so I'm not really sure if I'm going to support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Amanda Nardozzi?
Um, I, I also have that same thought. Um, I, I'm concerned about the amount of positions that we have open currently that we're unable to fill. Um, I think our students would be better suited having, um, teachers in place rather than supervisors. Um, so again, I'm, at this point, I don't know as if I'm going to be able to support it either.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Nardozzi. Anybody else have any last? Commissioner Adorno?
I'm sorry, just thinking about this because I, I think we all have the same concerns, but Darren, it, is it that we're just having trouble filling those, like, teachers are not, are applying for those positions, correct? It's not that, because that was my concern as well, that I'd rather try to fill these positions, but we're really struggling and trying to get teachers to even apply or fill those positions. Is, is that accurate to say?
Yeah, this is not a replacement of any teaching position at all. This is a person to support teachers when we bring them in and the development of their use of technology in the classroom, and so it does not replace teachers, it's an addition, and it's our ability to be able to, to, to utilize that technology across the district and having a focus on it. Probably the person, the supervisor, that would have the most, um, most oversight of the most funding in the entire district.
Especially after Mr. Marotti was talking to us about all the new trades and stuff that's been going on. That, that's why I am considering in, in allowing this, as long as we know that the budget to fund these vacancies is still going to be there. I think that's where a lot of people had their doubts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. It, yeah, there was no, there was no, uh, trading in a teaching position or teaching positions to get this. The teaching positions we have are posted and we're, we're, we're
Trying.
We're trying to fill them. It's not a, it's not a replacement, and if anything, it's a support of.
Thank you, thank you.
But this is not a vote for filling a position. This is a vote for approving a job description, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Um.
President Pagano?
Hold on one minute. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez has been waving her hand frantically.
Well, I, I, I'm in favor of this, um, only because right now, technology, we're, we're, we're all over the chart with it, and it's a huge investment, um, we are making to make sure that our teachers and our students are, are able to use the technology and, and the way that, which we want to try to go. Um, so I will be in favor of it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we all have individual, our own individual votes, and, and I just want to restate that I, I'm just a little, you know, unclear with this, um, um, position, creating this position, this new position, um, and so that's why I said at this time, I cannot support it. So, I just wanted to just make that clear. We all have our own individual votes and all reasoning why we are not going to vote or, or will vote for this. I just want to make that.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up, and then Commissioner Charles Stango.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President. I just want to make it clear, I, I was not making any, uh, um, remarks towards this being, you know, a replacement of any type of job. Um, I was not confused in the least. I was making a comparison of how we use Alliance money. Um, I have no, no confusion whatsoever that this is any connection to any job. This is a new position. I'm fully aware of that. So, I just want to make sure what I stated is understood correctly. I was not making any comparison there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Stango, you're up.
Thank you, Mister President. I just feel that we have been saying for a while now that we need to reimagine, we need to redesign, we need to move forward into the next, next thing that we're doing here. We don't know what's coming up. We need some people to straighten out and be on top of this technology stuff, and so therefore, I think the time is now, and I will be supporting it.
Okay, let me throw out another option. Do we want to table this for a future discussion while we digest it?
That might be in, in order. I know if I'd had a little bit more time to, uh, I was not able to make the personnel committee meeting, but that might be a possibility. I would not consider that.
If, if I may have the floor, Mister President, um, I, I don't see any reason not to take a vote on that. You know, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else have a discussion? Commissioner Orso?
Couple of things, just, just to, uh, just to clarify myself, Will Zou's position is to make sure that the technology works, and this new position is to make sure that the, the teachers know how to use the technology and the teaching, and, you know, teachers are paid to teach, and I mean, and sometimes the technology, they need a little bit more instructors on technology. Um, so, I mean, am, am I correct in that assumption that Will does make sure it works and this person is going to be teaching the teachers? You know, and, and a lot of them, you know, it's, you know, even some, the older teachers, a, and, and even the younger ones, I mean, they might not know about the technology and everything changes from day to day. You know, with your iPhones, there are phones that changes every other week, you know, so I, I think I'll be supporting this. Thanks.
Okay, then I don't think we need to put it off. I think we could take a vote if I'm hearing everybody correctly.
I think it should be roll call, Chuck.
Yep, um, Carrie, would you kindly do a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
No.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
No.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Five-three motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for a very energetic discussion and meeting. It was good to see everybody. Can I have a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody want to discuss it or are we all getting ready to get out of here and go to bed?
We are going to bed right now.
All right, Darren, you look tired, kid.
I'm, I'm worn.
All right. Guys, thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. Have a great couple of weeks until we meet again.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Everyone, stay safe. Congratulations.